First on the agenda, some of the entire presentations. So if we could turn it over to Mr. Himmelberger, he will make the presentation and we'll have you guys come up, three teachers first.
Thank you very much, Mr. Spitz. We have actually five folks that are leaving us this year, and I just wanted to make mention of Senior Chief Borland, who has completed forty-two years of service, not only to students, but also to our country. He could not be here this evening, and I will present this to him at the NJROTC Award Banquet on the fifteenth. Senior Chief Borland has made quite an impact in his twelve years of NJROTC with three different districts, along with a thirty-plus-year career in the Coast Guard. And for those of us who have had the opportunity of his wit and his personality, he will be missed, and I'm sure that he will have big shoes to be filled by the commander as we move forward. We are very fortunate to be able to recognize three teachers who have decided to retire: Mrs. Paula Brunel, Mrs. Linda Zariff, and Miss Karen Reedy. And I just wanted to say a little bit about each one of you, and then I had something to present. Karen Reedy began working for the Oxford Public Schools in September nineteen eighty-six, and she was a special ed teacher at the Chaffey School, and also worked in Project Duke, and then became a resource room teacher at the Chaffey School, and in nineteen ninety-nine, transferred to Clara Barton. And then, in her last several years, has been a literacy teacher at Clara Barton. And Karen has been active in the OEA and has made many contributions over the years to so many students, and you will be missed greatly. Mrs. Brunel started working in the Oxford Public Schools in a year that I can remember, but many of us can't, it was nineteen seventy-four, as a Title I Assistant, and then moved to a kindergarten teacher at the Chaffey School in nineteen seventy-five. And from nineteen eighty-one until today, she has taught third grade at Clara Barton School. And that is a generation of students and probably some parents that Mrs. Brunel has taught. And she was filling me in on some of her career today, and let me know that third grade has really been where she has found a tremendous amount of satisfaction in teaching the same grade for so many years. And we wish you well, and certainly, big shoes to fill from the third graders. Mrs. Linda Zariff, this year I cannot remember, was the early seventies, began working in September of nineteen seventy-three with the Oxford Public Schools as a speech therapist. And after some time off to have her family, came back to us, and since nineteen eighty-four has been with us as a speech therapist. And that is a long time that the three of you have given to the Oxford Public Schools, and certainly to so many students and their families. And I think that when you have a chance to reflect this summer over those many years, I'm sure that a lot of faces will pop back at you, and a lot of students, and a lot of interaction with their families, and I think that's probably what you'll remember most, hopefully, because of so many years that you have given and dedicated to us here in Oxford. And I wanted to present to each one of you a small token of the school committee's esteem, and certainly, thanks from everybody.
All I can say is these are very fragile. Whatever they are. No, they are. A small token, a small gift from the Oxford Public Schools. And not that you'll need to look and point use these much in your retirement.
Thank you very much.
The fifth person who's retiring is our food service director, Angela Scolaro. And it should be duly noted that she already had a surprise retirement party, so we don't have to spend too much time here this evening, but we might. Angela has become a fixture, not only in Oxford, but also in the state, and certainly at the national level, in her many years of contribution to the food service staff in the state of New York, in Illinois, and in Massachusetts. And Mrs. Scolaro has started her career in nineteen sixty...
Five.
Five. I do not remember that year for sure, and has served many hundreds of thousands of lunches over her career, and was named the National Food Service Director of the State of New York in nineteen seventy-six, I believe. Nineteen eighty-seven, the National Food Service Director of the Year Award for the state of Illinois. And in Massachusetts, the National Food Service Director of the Year, State Food Service Director of the Year in two thousand and eight. And in nineteen eighty-eight, Mrs. Scolaro was the runner-up for the National Food Service Director of the Year for all of the food service programs and directors in the country. Her contributions are lengthy, to say the least, and she has graciously allowed that we can ask her questions for the next year, to make sure that the transition goes smoothly. So I just wanted to present something small as well to Mrs. Scolaro.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you to the committee also for allowing me to take care of your children.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Thank you. Congratulations to all. We really appreciate the time and effort that you've given our children, so thank you very, very much. Next on the agenda, we're going to move our student rep, Nicole St. Jean, up, because she has finals tomorrow, and she's concerned.
Am I good? Okay. Okay. There's not too much going on anymore in Oxford High School right now. I mean, it's the end of the year, things are dwindling down, the last is coming, graduation has come and gone. It's dwindling, it's becoming summer vacation, but it will pick right back up again in August, and I'll have longer reports then, but for tonight, it's short and sweet, but that's good, too. So graduation went very smoothly. Everyone looked beautiful, all the seniors. Other than the seniors in staff help, there were also student help, the NHS and the NJROTC unit assisted in parking, handing out programs, helping different people, so it was really a school-wide kind of event. And congratulations to the class of two thousand and ten. Our talent show last week went very well. Our first-place winner was Sarah Shaw, who sang beautifully, and she won a fifty-dollar cash prize. The Student Council put that together and did an awesome job yet again, which brings me to my next subject. The Student Council had their award breakfast this morning, where the great teachers cooked us a nice breakfast, and Mrs. Spitz, our wonderful advisor, who I'd like to thank right now, even if you're not watching, she gave out awards for various things, attendance, community service hours, and she gave the seniors bracelets, the girls bracelets that are engraved, and I got one. And the guys got money pins?
Clips.
Money clips? Money clips, that I think she engraved, too. So, and that was our last event for this year, and then in the summer, we'll get together and start planning our freshman orientation, which will be held over the summer, too. This past weekend, on Saturday, Emily Dewidzik placed ninth in the state qualifying track-and-field meet, so congratulations to her. And I believe on the announcements this morning, she's the first girl to qualify in the last five years.
Wow, that's great.
So, really good for her, congratulations. Finals are starting officially tomorrow. The way it works here, we have six-period final tomorrow, and each final lasts an hour and a half, so our periods are kind of doubled. So we'll have one final tomorrow, and then two on Wednesday, two Thursday, two Friday. So they're spaced out great, enough time to study, still stressed out, but enough time to study. Our art show will be June ninth, from four to eight, where Ms. Bride will show off her wonderful students' artwork. And our last day of school is Monday, June fourteenth. As I say with a smile.
All right, Nicole, one second. Mr. Himmelberger, do we have a little something for Nicole to thank her for her time with us?
Yes, Mr. Spitz, the school committee does want to give to Nicole a small token of their appreciation, and certainly, it goes without saying that you have done just an outstanding job this year of balancing all of your schoolwork and all of your extracurricular activities, and the, I think, the reporting of what goes on in and at the high school has been outstanding. So, we know you have to leave, so I would like to present this to you.
Get studying. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from May twenty-fourth. Do we have some corrections that you would like to see notated on these? Mrs. Ennis?
I don't know if we're just going to submit them, and I give you the corrections, if you'd like, or do you want to go, want me to go through them?
Well, we don't have anyone to record that tonight, so just, if you could, give me the corrections, and we'll pass them along, and we'll make sure that they're amended with those corrections.
Okay. On the third page, under my comments, I think that this line just needs to be corrected. It says, "The school committee votes out sports." I didn't say anything like that. I don't know if she needs to look at the tape of what I did say, but... And under Mr. Spitz, "The students were extremely well-behaved, well-admitting." I'm not sure if there are any other corrections, but those are the two that I caught.
Is there anything else from the committee? Given that there's none, could I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we vote? Mrs. Dewidzik?
I'm staying.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes, but I'd like the motion to reflect with the corrections.
Okay. And could we also make sure, Mr. Himmelberger, that she has those corrected for the next meeting, if we could, so we could have them?
Yes.
And I also will vote yes for that, so, thank you. The minutes are approved. Under new business, we have the school improvement plans. If you'd like to go first, we can have grammar schools first, if you'd like. Come on up, Mr. Yvonne.
We had executive session.
We can go back to that, then.
Okay.
Mrs. Fornier, welcome. Mr. Yvonne, go right ahead, it's all yours. Go right ahead. Do you want to go through any of the points of your school improvement plan with us? Anything that you've changed from last year, or anything that you feel that is really going to make a difference in, you know, your scores for the school, or anything that you've done that you feel you've added to our mission statement, you've got your action plan in here? It'd be great if we could just touch on a couple of subjects on that, whatever you'd like to do with it.
The Clara Barton School Advisory Council wrote a school improvement plan as if we were not reconfiguring, because the council wasn't representative of the new Clara Barton School, and I won't be the principal of the new Clara Barton School, so that the plan is relatively the same from last year. We took out of the goals and objectives things that we had already accomplished, makes sense to keep them in there, to say, continue doing them, and left in those things that we needed to continue to work on, and then worked on the assumption that the new principal of Clara Barton School will create a new school council and develop a school improvement plan specific for grades three and four, as I plan to do for the Chaffey School for the coming school year.
Okay. Well, that's pretty simple. Mrs. Ennis?
That brings a question, then, for me. Then these really aren't appropriate, or are they? I guess I'm looking for clarification, if the schools are going to reconfigure, these are improvement plans for next year, they're not really, I mean, what are we going to do? How are we going to go forward with improvement plans for the next year? Or are you going to put together a committee quickly?
Well, I think what we'll end up doing is, once the newer principal is appointed by June eighteenth, and with the help of Mr. Yvonne and the administrative council, we'll put this together to reflect the new changes and the reconfiguration.
So here's my other side of that question, then, I guess. Would we even be accepting anything like this tonight, or how would we? I guess I'm just looking for clarification, because it's not even, the reconfiguration isn't even factored into any of these, so...
Go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would suggest that we would look at the elementary buildings for the next meeting, to approve those on the twenty-eighth, if that's, in fact, where our next meeting will be.
Is that okay with the committee? Everybody good with that? So we'll do that, then. Well, it was nice to see you both. We appreciate it, but...
Mine did reflect the reconfiguration, so I...
Oh, good. Well, then, let's get a few of your things, then.
I think that certainly it's open to change, but based on the fact that the school will be primarily grades three and four, and then with the preschool, the focus is definitely on those M-class scores, so it was rather simple to kind of just draw from that and build into that the need to continue doing some of the things that were taking place at both schools. Certainly, you know, focusing on making the Title I support across the board for, you know, now that it will be in the building, we'll have it there for the grades, to build upon what we've done in the past, providing the services of the double dose with the Wilson Foundations. There's also a goal in there to help with the transition from one school to the other. So although it is reflective of the configuration or the reconfiguration, certainly, you know, it is open to it, but I think it reflects, if I may say that, a good starting point for somebody to come in and to take a look at what has happened, what we hope to build on. Did focus somewhat strengthen the need to focus on the anti-bullying and to incorporate the new laws and things that are, you know, needed for us as a school to come up with a more comprehensive plan for the parents and the students and the staff. So that's in there as well. So I think that it was tweaked a bit, pulling out those things that perhaps didn't fit into the K-1-2, but did fit into primarily the 3-4.
Well, when I read through this, I did realize that you did have grades three and four in here, and I just didn't know that, see, like, it said the Clara Barton School, and it was prepared by you guys at AM Chaffey, so...
Right. Well, I spoke to Mr. Himmelberger about that. I said that it got a little tricky in places where...
Well, I can imagine it would.
Because the need for it, realizing that it was for another school, could just not say who prepared it, but then that doesn't give credence to the people that did work on it. So I felt the need to put that in there, and it was, as I had questioned, that in terms of vision statements, mission statements, do you take the one that was written for you and put that in there, or do you take the one that's already at that building? And so, tried to do the best that I could with what I had, but I'm hoping...
Good, and we do appreciate that very, very much, and thank you for that effort. We really do. And I'm sure that when we do make changes to it, a lot is probably going to be incorporated from what you've done into the next one. So we will still wait until the next meeting before we can finalize, hopefully, one for, you think that's possible?
Yep.
I don't know if it will be or not, because with the new principal, we probably won't have time to really have that for the next one.
Yeah, we'll not have much input.
We won't have a school council, a school community to work with.
Right, so...
If we're talking about a new vision statement for an early learning center, as opposed to a K-3-4 elementary school, a vision statement, I don't want to put that together myself over the summer, certainly can, but would like to get that together with the school community. It's also another, an activity that will help bring the community together.
So this actually should be an activity that we revisit. Mrs. Dewidzik?
I would say we could use it as a foundation. It's going to be a foundation, a work in progress, and we could approve it as that, because the whole year it will take you to pick out what applies and what doesn't. So I think it would be a great foundation. You put a lot of work in, and they could use it as that, and use it for each school.
Well, I think there is a tremendous amount of good stuff in here, and as Mrs. Dewidzik said, it's a great foundation, I think, for whoever's going to build that next one. I think you are a hundred percent correct, that we really can't do anything until you can involve the entire community with who you're working with. So certainly, I think we could go forward with what's been built here, but look forward to seeing your improvements in the fall to kind of adjust for the two different schools. Mr. Peterson?
With that being said, and Mr. Yvonne notes where he's going and can use or build off from Mrs. Fornier's, and I appreciate that he prepared the one for Clara Barton, and I think that it should be accepted and used, and a new principal coming in can make the adjustments accordingly. And I think it should be accepted and put forward to the Clara Barton community, so that they have something to work on, and not, anybody coming in is going to have enough to do without immediately coming up with a school improvement plan. I appreciate what you're saying, Mr. Yvonne, working with the school community, but most of your school community for that particular building is in place, and I don't see why either one of them can't be used, and can't be accepted, and then they're always being, always being tweaked and always being worked on, anyway.
Would you like to make that a motion?
I so would.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Could we put that to a vote, please, Mrs. Dewidzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
No.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I will also vote yes, just so that we have a foundation to start with, and I think, to Mrs. Dewidzik's point, which is a very good one, there's a lot of work in here, and you'd hate to see that go for nothing. And certainly, I think a lot of it can be used, so we're going to kind of steal some of your ideas, Mrs. Fornier, and continue on with that in the fall. So thank you both very much for the efforts that you've done so far, and we will use those.
I do appreciate that they're in print something to work with.
Okay, do we have the middle school next? Mrs. Hackett, Mr. Milner? And really, you know, without running through the entire thing, because we want to make this as simple as possible, I think the committee has all read this, and we've done a tremendous amount of these over the years. Do you have anything that you'd like to highlight for us and the community that you've either changed, or, you know, made an addendum to last year's, so that we can just pretty much know? This is a pretty lengthy booklet, and it's got a lot of great stuff in it, and I think you guys have covered pretty much everything I could think of. So it was very professionally done, and I appreciate the effort from both of you on that. But if you want to just hit a couple of highlights for us, or...
Last year, we had given you one that was color-coded, new was in, I think, gray, and completed was in yellow.
It was for me, you did that for me.
It was very confusing when we went back to work on it, so we decided, as a committee, in, I think, September, October, to undo the color coding, so we could figure out what we had. Anything that we had completed, or we felt we had reached the goal, is no longer in the booklet at all. Some things have been tweaked a little bit, some have been eliminated altogether. However, goal number six is new, and that is in response to the new law governing the anti-bullying policies. So it is a piece here, and certainly, we are still looking for programs that would be helpful. It appears on page eighteen of your booklet. And we do also address that, again, in reference to a document that is under review and consideration that will be also a part of our student handbook. So we are trying to address the issue through two different documents, because it is a very important issue. We are still certainly striving to have as much parental involvement as possible. We do have some, and we are very grateful to the people that we have, however, we would still like to see that improve. And the same with community involvement, so... However, at our most recent Memorial Day presentation and ceremony, we had doubled, or more than doubled, the size of our guests in attendance.
Great.
So this year, we were lucky to have with us a representative group of the Vietnam veterans, so that was very nice to have them with us.
Wow, great.
And they were a new addition to our group. So community is becoming involved, and some people there at that ceremony did ask if they would be allowed to come to Recognition Day. So apparently, there is interest, and some of the people do come to National Honor Society induction, so they don't have a connection to a student, but like to be a part of what's going on in the school. So we certainly welcome them, and we are glad to have them as a part of our community, cheering on the success of our children, so...
Very good, very good. Any questions from the committee? Everybody good? Thank you, it was excellent, very well done. So, do we have a second on that?
Second.
Mrs. Dewidzik?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also vote yes. The high school? Mr. Wells, Mr. Nugent?
If I may, through the chair, just to bring some highlights for changes that, or additions, I should say, that we'll have for next year. Currently, Oxford High School is in a partnership with Community Health Link. We had started this at the beginning of last year, and we now have completed the full turn, if you will. The person that we have on board as a mental health counselor is here two days a week, so we find that that program is being very, very successful. It provides an opportunity for families to have counseling outside of the world of school, yet inside of the building itself. So students are taken from their academic lab, and it works out exceptionally well. So I'm very happy to report that we will try to continue to work with them and expand that program. We will be making a change in our advanced placement instructor next year, in looking at assessments, scores, our AP scores with Mr. Nugent. We've decided to go in a different direction, and we also have tried to concentrate more in guidance on trying to push the advanced placement bio course itself, to try to increase enrollment as well. In looking at our SAT scores, we certainly are not happy at this point in time where we, our scores are currently registering. Last year, we did make an attempt, although it was in vain, to provide SAT prep courses, both in ELA and math. So we're going to try to publicize that a little bit more this year, because I don't think we did a good enough job, because we were undersubscribed, we were not able to offer the courses. So hopefully, we'll be able to do it. We will try both on the weekends and in the evening, to see if we can't get the parents to send their children to the SAT prep courses. Thanks for the support of the school committee, next year, Oxford High School will be able to offer some half-year courses in English, Journalism, Comics and Graphics, Sports Writing for the Sports Enthusiast, Science Fiction and Fantasy, as well as writing. And in the art department, we will be able to expand to encompass Digital Design I, II, III, and IV, which should be able to provide the students quite a vast array of digital photography and courses in that, using the computers a lot more than we currently are. So we're in the process of recruiting students for that now, as add-on classes, and the subscription seems to be going very, very well.
Any questions from the committee? Everybody good? Do we have a motion to approve?
Moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we vote that, please?
Yes.
Okay, Mrs. Conan? Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
If you want to stay, we'll do your handbook. Sorry, Mr. Wells, to do that to you.
Sure.
But while you're there, we'll go through, because now, you've just included for us the changes to the handbook, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I personally had just a couple of questions on it, about the absences. Didn't we used to have an attendance committee at one point? Teachers reviewing attendance?
Yes.
I think a couple of years ago, we did, right?
Yes.
And that seemed to be, those were the people that decided whether somebody should be passed along, based on the number of attendances that they had. Do you know why we don't do that? I mean, that, to me, was a great idea, to let the teachers' involvement... I, just, let me know, what'd you think on that?
Well, for the past two years, it was really a time factor.
Okay.
The first, two years ago, when we had, we lost a professional development, we had subs come in every Thursday for the teachers to work together for half a day and half a day. So just time-wise, as getting teachers sub-timed to come in to do that, was just taking them out of the class... So just time-wise, as getting teachers sub-timed to come in to do that, it was just taking them out of the classroom more than that. And then this year was knee-ask. So it wasn't a formal committee, but certainly the nurse and Mrs. Rascott in guidance were certainly involved with, with the decisions.
Okay, thank you very much.
It is a goal to have that back for next year.
Oh, that'd be great. Thank you, that's, that's excellent. There any other questions from the committee? I mean, because they're pretty well laid out, which made it very easy for me. I didn't have to go looking through for the changes, which was great and I appreciate that very much.
What was Mr. Nugent's doing?
Oh, nice job, Mr. Nugent. That was great. Mrs. Conan?
Sorry, just a couple of questions. Are we eliminating the world language requirement for graduation?
That's something that we had talked about in the past. When I first came onboard, what had happened at some point in time is it was no longer mandated.
Okay.
So at this point in time, I wanted to formalize it, quite frankly, because there was no sense having it as a requirement when students weren't taking that as, as part of their course load.
Okay, thank you.
So yes.
And just one other thing, thank you for the juniors and seniors with the college visits. As a daughter that has started looking at colleges in her junior year, I'm sure that that will be appreciated and helpful throughout the year. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Any other questions or comments? There being none, could we motion to approve? Do we have a second? Okay. Mrs. Dewitzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson? I also vote yes. Thank you both very much, you made this very easy. Thank you, Mr. Nugent, that was great. So why don't we go in reverse order again? I probably should have just done all of these at the same time, but you know, I was just, I'm trying to go by this agenda that was so well-planned and that's the next item, so we're, we're going to do that. And again, the same thing with, with yours, if you could, just let us know any of the highlights. One of the things that I noticed in yours, the sexual harassment officers, how we have the full listing for all the schools. We've got for the high school in this one listed as Mr. Thomas Ward, when in fact, I think it's Mrs. Kathy Wieland now, right?
Starting next year, yes.
Starting next year, but we should have the new information in their book as well if it's going to be, right? Because she's got everybody from the entire school system, which I think is great. That's a great service for the parents, but if you could just change that, if you could?
Change that to Kathy Wieland.
Kathy Wieland, Mrs. Kathy Wieland, please. But everything else, I thought, was great and it's pretty well spelled out. I mean, if there are any questions, they're pretty much answered here and we appreciate that very much. Because you covered a lot of the stuff that I think we've talked about over the years and, and you've incorporated it. And I, I personally really appreciate that because I think you've done a great job with this.
And we did highlight in gray, I think we only had a few changes for you, so those are, so that you'd see which ones they are. So make it easier reading for you.
And you did. So thank you. Okay, Mrs. Ennis?
Could we go to page 14, please? For bicycles. Why aren't our students required to wear helmets when they are on their bikes to school? Have we ever looked at that or?
They have, actually, two years ago, well, every year, the school resource officer, Officer Grenet, has done a bicycle safety program with our students before the end of the year. And I believe two or three years ago, he partnered with other communities to procure grant whereby we provided a helmet for anybody who did not have one. Beyond that, and us telling them the safety and the need for it and that it is required by law, there is really not a lot of policing that we can do to make that happen beyond showing all of the, the movies and the videos that we have for the safety need. It really goes beyond us to be able to stand out there every morning or every, and once they get to school and we see them without a helmet, it's really too late, they've already come to school without a helmet.
Can I ask a question on that? Because I think that's a great point, but I think you have a way around that as well. Because you have in the beginning here, students must have a written permission from the parent or guardian in order to ride the bike. We should also include in that written permission, the requirement, each child must wear a helmet. They're not going to really know that, you know, the policing isn't going to be daily. I mean, Officer Grenet will certainly check it. But that would give, I think, the parent's commitment that their child will show up at school with a helmet, with a permission slip. Mrs. Ennis?
My concern is, when I've seen the kids going to school on their bikes, I've seen them cut off traffic. I mean, I know it's not our responsibility, but I, I mean, they're on their way to school. And I, I don't, I don't know, I just think that we're, as parents, we tell them, you have to have your helmet. Even when they're in the neighborhood where there's little traffic and here they are going down Main Street. I just think that there's a safety issue. It's really something that we should maybe take a look at. And, and like Mr. Spitz just said, it would be a requirement for them to have their, you know, have the ability to ride their bikes in. I mean, I would make that a school-wide requirement, just to have, you know, to get on their bikes to be able to come to school. So it's just a safety, it's a big safety issue for me, I think.
Mr. Peterson?
I agree with you as far as the safety issue is concerned, but I agree with Mrs. Hackett. We've looked at this before. It isn't quite the same as riding a bus. On the bus, they are under our care and custodialship coming to and from school. On a bike, until they enter our school property, it's still the parent's responsibility and their responsibility. And I'm not, I'm not downplaying safety because we make all our grandkids and stuff wear their helmets, including myself. But the reason for the permission slip is, if I understood this right, Mrs. Hackett, when we did this a while ago, it's because they are storing them on our property. So once the bike is on our property, the bike is our responsibility. If something happens, the same as a student driving to school and having a car at the high school or whatever. But to and from, the state law is very implicit what it is. And if the police pick them up, it's out of our control. And, and you can require the police to sit out there and watch bikes come and go if you want. And I think that's a little over policing personally. And I think, like Mrs. Hackett said, we have a lot more to do than have a guy stand out there.
I agree.
It's bad enough we have to direct traffic without putting someone out there to be a bike cop too, at the same time.
Totally agree.
So I, I, I understand your interest, Mrs. Ennis, and your concern, and I have the same thing in safety, but I don't know what else we can really do.
Mrs. Ennis, you have one more point?
Then, I don't know who can answer this for me, but what is the school department's liability if a kid gets in an accident without a helmet on their way to school? I mean, if it was a worker's comp issue, if they were on their way to work, it would be up to the, it would be the employer's responsibility. So where does our responsibility begin and end when they're on their bike coming to school? Once they're on the bus, they're ours. So when they're on a bicycle, where does it start and stop?
Mr. Peterson?
A workman's comp issue is a little different too, because I'm on the road all the time. Once I'm on the road for the job, yes, workman's comp falls into it, my car insurance covers it. But when, it's not the same as going from point A to point B to get to and from work. Workman's comp would never cover you, the same as the child coming from home, point A to point B to get here. Their own personal insurance or, there are some, I did have one case recently. A soccer ball ran out and the guy riding his motorcycle hit the soccer ball and was injured and his insurance didn't cover it. And our private organization had to cover it because we didn't have the proper fencing up to keep that soccer ball from going out to hit the person on the street. So there are implied laws as well, but basically, no, it's not our responsibility to and from.
And if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to see something like that in writing then, that we don't have the responsibility. I, I want to see the document.
Can we check on that?
Be glad to.
Thank you, Mr. Helberger. All right. Any other comments, questions? Mrs. Ennis? Yeah, well, I just want to make sure everybody's.
If we could go to page 19? I'm just curious, I, I guess my question is on, under vacations. When the vacation does not coincide with school vacations, how do, as principal and vice-principal, do you handle that? And what do teachers, what are the responsibility of the teachers? Do they have to put together work for the student if they're taking vacation or time off from school that does not coincide with school vacation?
We, when the students return, the teachers do keep aside a packet so that they can make up what they've missed. But we do not require teachers to provide it prior to the vacation. It puts a teacher in a position of an added burden because they may not have already been to that particular place in their lesson plans. And it would be accommodating something that really goes contrary to what we believe. So the response is that when you return, you do have a certain amount of time to make up that work.
That's all I have, thank you.
There being no other questions, comments? Could we have a motion to approve? Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Could we have a vote? Mrs. Dewitzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Thank you both very, very much. Sorry to bring you back up again. And pretty much the same thing, we just want to look for any changes. Anything at all that you've added, subtracted, that you feel is important?
As, as with the other handbooks, there are a few changes for this, for this coming school year. We've added the bullying policy that the district has adopted as part of the listing of legal policies at the end of the handbook. We have removed the reference to the half-day kindergarten program because that program at the end of the school year will no longer exist. And then made adjustments to names and places so that the correct principal's name is with the correct school. The name of the interim food services director is included. And the only other change that is outstanding is the tardy time for each elementary school. And once it's decided which building's going to start first and which one's going to start second, those times will be placed.
And again, if we could just make the correction here too, that we still have Mr. Ward listed as the high school. If we could just have Mrs. Kathy Wieland listed. Because again, you have everybody listed pretty much for each, each school, which is great. We just want to have the right people for the fall, that's all. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Ennis?
We had discussed an age-appropriate bullying policy. And I haven't seen, is that still a work in progress or?
It is and I, I'm sorry.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Chairman, in response to Mrs. Ennis, I, I think that, I would like maybe a little further direction from the committee because the feeling was, once we had discussed this at administrative council, that the policy really shouldn't be changed from the standpoint of the handbooks. Because I think to try and give different versions of it, whether it be for age-appropriate or, or another reason, I think tends to confuse what is a already very confusing law, both in terms of the explanation as well as the enforcement and as well as all of the deliverables that the district needs to come up with. So I guess I would, I would ask the committee, if in fact, you think that that needs to be done, we can certainly put the verbiage together in each handbook. And I understand at the elementary level, certainly, and again, I'm not sure how many of the students actually read the handbooks. I still think it is a parental, it is a parental responsibility and they are the ones that respond to it. So the, the, the initial feedback from the administrative council and certainly my thoughts were to keep the language intact as it's stated by the school committee's policy. And certainly, I'm open to suggestions from the committee. But I, I think that's where, where we are right now.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Helberger.
Thank you.
So being that there are no more comments or questions? Thank you.
Second.
Okay. Mrs. Dewitzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Conan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Thank you both very much again. Mrs. Daley? We have your improvement plan here. Oh, why don't we do? What, these two? Yeah, so, no, you go right ahead. Basically, what we're looking for tonight is exactly what we've been asking everyone. You've, you've put together a really great, a great model for us to study and look at throughout this process of seeing exactly what your plans are for the upcoming year and I appreciate that very, very much. Is there any highlights that you'd like the public to know about it too? Because I mean, we have these copies, which are great, but it's always good that they hear the highlights for this coming year from, from you.
Certainly. With the reconfiguration and full-day kindergarten, we'll be able to offer Title I services in the kindergarten in both math and reading. We'll continue the double-dose program that we're doing now with foundations in grades one, two, and three, in addition to adding it to the kindergarten. This year, we started morning math in both elementary schools, which is a before-school math kind of tutorial motivator-type program. We will continue that next year at both elementary schools. We've, we've done that for a few years now at the middle school and it's been very successful at helping a lot of our students. So we will continue next year in both elementary schools as well. We, we progress-monitor our students in reading using DIBELS. And this year, we created a progress report so that the parents would be aware of the benchmarks that children are expected to achieve three times during the year. And those are sent home with activities that parents can work with their children on to improve those, improve those scores after each assessment.
Great. Any questions from the committee on what you've seen here? Mr. Peterson?
The booklet is excellent, thank you. I just have a question on the Wilson program. Where do we stand? Are we utilizing the maximum slots that we're allowed out there and what's happening?
Absolutely. We added Just Words last year. We did the training for Just Words, which is a new program. Kind of a faster-paced type program for Wilsons so that a child can actually complete 12 steps of the program in one year. More of a small, small-group activity rather than a, a one-on-one that, that we've used in the past.
So our partnership with them at this point is more than working out.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Mrs. Ennis?
Just wondering, how many students do we have count-wise participating in the Title I program?
Close to 300.
That's great, okay. Very good, thank you.
Everybody good? Now, is this one that we have to approve? I mean, I didn't think so. Thank you, Mrs. Dewitzick. No.
Nice to have, thank you.
Yeah, it is, it's excellent. It really kind of laid everything out for me and I appreciate that very, very much. If we could have Nancy James? We're going to take care of both of yous at one time so we don't have to make you sit down again. First, if we could talk about your school improvement plan?
Sure. This year, we're going to continue to increase the percentage of students that we have enrolling in post-secondary programs. With our graduating class this year, we had nine students who have graduated. All nine students passed all three MCAS. We're very proud of our 100%
You should be.
Passing, especially this year with the new biology requirement, science requirement. Everyone passed.
Wow, that's great.
With that, that brings an interest amongst the students that perhaps they are capable of continuing their education. And so the upside to the MCAS is they know that 2,900 seniors across the state of Massachusetts did not pass all three MCAS requirements. And 100% of the Project Coffee seniors did. And so we had six students this year who are continuing their education after high school. A seventh student who has enlisted in the Marines and two students who are using the vocational skills that they've learned at Project Coffee to go into the workforce. And we would like to continue because this is a new day and age. Project Coffee used to be a school-to-work program, but things have changed, times have changed and our students need to continue their education as well. And 60% of the students are doing that and we want to continue to increase that number. Another area that we're going to continue on is the career interest inventory. We have in the past worked with the Massachusetts National Guard who have come in and provided an excellent, in-depth career interest inventory for our students. And they have done this for free. It's a wonderful instrument, but due to their budget cuts, that program was eliminated. So we are in the process now of researching similar career interest inventories that the students can use. And the other part of the school improvement plan, which is along with the middle school and I'm sure all the other schools, is to really work on the bullying policy. We have been very, very diligent at Project Coffee to be a bully-free school and have for a very long time. And because we are a small program, very structured with a small staff-to-student ratio and a behavior management plan- of the students would call teasing, but we are calling bullying. And we want to continue to work on that, and to help students understand the difference between what's teasing and what's bullying. And for the staff to be trained on that as well. We have put together an incident report form, and we've started to use that already, where teachers document specific incidences that happen. The student is brought in to meet with the counselor and/or myself. Parents are contacted, both the student who has been teased, as well as the parent of the student who has done the teasing. So that everybody is informed. And we'll continue to work on that all this coming school year, to have that policy in effect.
Great. Any questions from the committee? Comments? Everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
Could we move to approve?
It's moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Duitzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Thank you for that. Now, we have your handbook. And if you could kind of do the same thing for us that everyone else has done, and really just kind of give us some of the highlights that you've done from last year.
The handbook has basically stayed the same. The things that have changed are outlined in gray. We have always had, in our parent handbook, a photographing of students' permission form. And we've included it this year in the student handbook, as well as the parent handbook. And that allows us to do this kind of photographing of students, and we're very diligent about making sure that students who are photographed for any kind of public documentation have parental permission. We're also going to be now requesting that students sign that as well, not just their parents. So that's a new addition to the student handbook, and then, the bullying policy has been added to the handbook as well this year.
Very good. Questions or comments from the committee? Mrs. Coonan?
Just one. On page 35, again, the sexual harassment complaints. I'm sure you knew that was coming.
Yes, we'll make those corrections.
Looks like a couple of corrections. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Could we motion to approve?
It's moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mrs. Duitzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also vote yes. Thank you very, very much. We appreciate your efforts on that. And thank you very much for this. This is really cool, and I really enjoy it.
Well, I'm glad.
And this is something that I think really highlights the things that you're doing and accomplishing, so thanks again for that.
You're quite welcome. And I added to the school committee's newsletter the copy of a letter from the town...
Yes.
...making reference to the wonderful job that the construction students have been doing on behalf of the town. So, certainly, if you have the opportunity, I invite you to come visit the program.
You're very proud of it, I know.
We would love to take you on a tour and show you some of the wonderful activities that the students do, and I know they're always very proud to show off their work as well. So, if there's ever an opportunity for you to come visit, please do.
Thank you very, very much. We appreciate it. Mrs. Baker? Would you like to join us? Yours is just kind of a year in review, right?
Yes.
Okay. So, why don't you tell us about what's been happening?
Well, we spent the last couple of years really developing and reinforcing our mission of minimizing the impact of disability, maximizing opportunities for students. And I think we've come quite far in a couple of years. We've bridged a lot of gaps in the schools between regular education teachers and special ed staff, both teachers, team chairs, therapists. We have taken data and reports from various consultants that have come in and made some positive changes. I know that I had presented earlier this year on the Futures Health Corps, and I thought it was important to give you some data. Because as much as we can talk about our vision and talk about programmatic things, I think the numbers speak for themselves. And staff have worked very hard in helping both staff within the district, as well as parents, understand where we're coming, where we're going in terms of our vision, and how to continual... Continue to bring special ed and regular ed together in the schools.
That's great.
And that there has been a positive impact, both financially and programmatically.
I can see that, and thank you for that.
You're welcome.
The update was great, and we always look forward to your presentations, because they usually are of very positive nature to them. So, thank you very much for that. And this, again, for the committee, I mean, there were a few things on here that I thought were great. The students receiving services, you know, I think that... I think we're doing a great job with really analyzing which students should have the services, and I think you've done a great job with that. And I think that's helped the whole system. So, I appreciate that very much, and I know the committee does as well. So, thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
And we really appreciate your efforts.
Thanks.
Any questions from the committee? Everybody good? Mr. Trahan? We're saving the best for last.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My presentation to you is also a year in a review, and with some of our objectives and plans for next year. Outlined, our technology staff. As of the 15th of July, we will have four staff on the technology department, taking one of our tech... Computers repair and support technicians, and turning them into a data coordinator for the district. The DESE is requiring more and more reporting to them. Next year, the reports that we have to deliver are more than doubling. But that person will also handle some of the things, such as accounts for iPass, accounts for School Fusion, accounts for Study Island, accounts for our typing program. As we have moved towards more of these online and web-based applications, we need a little less of the, "I need someone to plug in my printer," or "get my speakers to work," and a little bit more management and support on that end. So, I think that will be a huge asset for the district. It will also streamline and really make sure that there's significant integrity in the data that we're giving to other people. Right now, these data collections are the responsibility of this person over here, and this person over here, and this person over here, and we need to make sure that we wrap that up with a bow, is really what I want to do. And make sure that this is this person's job, and all of the numbers and figures are correct before they go out to, you know, the next step. And I think that's going to be a huge asset to the district. We made some upgrades, of course, as we need to every year, to the technology. This past summer, I worked with Mrs. Hackett over at the middle school, and we rehabbed room 215. If you haven't been to room 215, it's the crown jewel of the technology department. So, go to room 215 at the middle school. Beautiful lab setup. I love having trainings over there. We have a wonderful wall-mounted smartboard. The teachers love it, and it's booked every period of every day, all year long. So, that has been a huge, huge, huge benefit to us. We also added a smartboard in the conference room at the middle school, paid for through a grant that we received. We decided to put it in the middle school conference room, because I use that room for training. So, it was a professional development grant that paid for the smartboard, and we were able to use that room for training. I have to pay Mrs. Hackett rent when I do. Usually, it's just a Diet Coke, so that's cheap enough. But rather than taking room 215 or another computer lab away from students for a day, I go into the conference room at the middle school, and we're able to provide our support and training to the teachers, so that's great. We also recently upgraded our firewall, that is, the content filter and the protection for our network here at the high school. And that's in anticipation of upgrading our internet connection as of July 1 to fiber-based internet. Oxford has a fiber network. All of the buildings are linked through fiber, and now, we're going to take advantage of that fiber and deliver our internet through fiber as well. So, as we continue to grow, and teachers are relying on network and web-based applications, that bandwidth, that resource, will be there for them as we continue that. So, the firewall is key, because it's the bottleneck. Everything goes through the firewall before it gets out or comes in, so that's important. This year, we're finishing up two competitive grants. Project Elite 2, which was a $75,000 grant that we awarded, that's the second year, so a total of $150,000 over the last two years. That's a collaborative grant with four other towns. Each town sends five teachers to a series of workshops that I have designed, and we're training them to be technology leaders in their school, to incorporate technology into their curriculum as they're teaching geography and science and English, helping them to better understand the technology we have and use that with their students. The map testing and data warehouse grant helped us... That was a partnership with Sutton. It helped us to expand our map testing this year to the ninth grade. So, we have some really good historical data for our students and performance data. It also allowed us to... And we actually had our last training today for that. It allowed us to upload those map results into the data warehouse, so now we can slice and dice the map data that we get, the map information with MCAS, and see a complete historical picture of student performance over time. And that was a $35,000 grant. On June 3, I personally drove a $300,000 grant proposal to the DESE for a project that we're calling Project Okra, for lack of a better word. It's not fancy, but I am particularly excited about this project. And here, I am saying that it's a partnership with eight districts. We had a ninth, thanks to Mr. Himmelberger's sales pitch. I don't know where he was doing this, but he was selling the project. We have nine districts, along with the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative, that are partnering with us to develop this grant project. Basically, each district will pick and choose two or three high school teachers, or teachers who are certified at the high school level, to design and develop, as well as deliver, online courses for credit recovery. And I think we're hoping, at the end of the project, to have 24 successful online courses that our students can take in the, you know, the core subject areas, math, English, science, and social studies, as well as things like personal finance, and maybe art appreciation or music appreciation. So that students from our high school, as well as the other partnering high schools, including Project Coffee and Project Grow from the collaborative, can, you know, increase their... The credits needed to graduate and complete the mass core of courses. We're going to use School Fusion to deliver these courses to our students. School Fusion has all of the tools needed to deliver a successful online course, in addition to, as you guys know, the parent portal, so parents can follow those courses. The decision to go with that product to deliver these courses was very easy. Six out of the nine districts use School Fusion as the web base. So, we're teaching teachers to develop courses in a tool they already know how to use, and we're just developing a skill that they need and can use back here. We're hoping to deliver these courses to students from the partnership through the spring and summer of next year. And the ultimate goal for me, or the ultimate hope, would be that we could find an agency who would pick up these courses, maybe manage them and deliver them in the future as well. We continued with our rollout of iPass. As of September of this year, iPass went live, and I have to say, overall, there are glitches as we go through with any change, but overall, it was very successful. We gave accounts to all of the teaching staff. They managed to use the program to keep their rank book, their grade book. All of our report cards are now done digitally, and we had very, very few issues rolling out. And I think it gives the data to the people who need to use the data, when they need to use the data. So, I think that was... That's really good. Professional development has always been a pet of mine. We have... My goal every year is 3,000 hours of professional development. So, each teacher that comes to a full-day workshop logs seven hours, and we've been able to do that. And these are some of the professional development offerings that we've had this year, and we'll continue that again next year. Applications that the technology department continues to support, School Fusion. We expanded the use of School Fusion this year to include our elementary schools, and we're continuing to provide professional development to our teachers on the use of classroom web pages. So, now, each of our buildings has a dedicated School Fusion website, and every teacher can have a classroom webpage to disseminate information to students and parents. I think that's really important. We just finished our ninth testing session of MAP. Today, reports were printed, and they will go home with students at the end of the year. The technology department oversees this project. We submit a roster file to NWA each year, each testing period of students that will be tested. We monitor the testing, close the testing, thank you, and print the reports for students. So, that was very good. And again, we were able to, this year, through the use of a grant, expand the testing for all students in three to nine. Mrs. Daley also tests some of the Title I students in first and second grade. Study Island, we've continued again this year. We'll continue Study Island next year. It'll look a little different as far as who were... What buildings are being serviced because of the reconfiguration, so we won't have Study Island at the AM Chafee School, because there won't be any third and fourth graders there. In addition to that, we are maintaining SEMS tracker for our students on special education IEPs. Last year, I had two teaching assistants at the middle school approach me about automating our library systems. And it has always been a backburner project for me, but definitely something that we needed to do here. We didn't have an automated library system. Students could not look, look up, or search for books that we have in our libraries at home. And Melissa Devon and Denise Lewis at the middle school spent countless hours searching for the right system for Oxford. I gave them some basic guidelines that I wanted to make sure that it was compatible with what we're doing, and they came up with a few vendors, and we had a little team get-together, and we did a vendor demonstration, and we picked a system that was both cost-effective and appropriate for our district. Every building now has an online library automation system. The library and media specialists are working diligently to hand-enter all of our books in that system. And that's... That was begun... That began in March. We provided them with professional development, and I think that's going to be a huge asset to each building. One of the nice features about the system that we chose is that our map tests give each student a Lexile score. Students can go into their building and actually search for books using that Lexile score. So, they don't have to look for the colored dots on the shelves, although that still works, but they can actually say, "Okay, this is my Lexile score, and these are the books that the library has that are appropriate," and there are pictures included as well. Other department responsibilities, of course, maintaining the email system, the technology asset and inventory management, the network servers, and internet connectivity, our firewall. We take care of the phone and voicemail, data backup and recovery, our software licensing, and 600 desktop computers district-wide. We maintain the student information system. We coordinate the district's E-Rate application and funding. We submit all of the SEMS reports. We coordinate access to the Department of Education's security portal for teachers and administrators, and we write and submit the district's technology plan, which is approved by the DESE every year. Next year, we're looking to continue working with the district's technology team to improve all systems and make decisions. I'm hoping to, if we get the grant on July 1, implement Project Okra, and continue to look for other sources of fundings. There are grants out there, we just have to apply for them. We'll train the new data coordinator and refine the department processes. We'll continue to replace and update outdated computers district-wide. We'll increase the technology-related professional development opportunities for faculty and staff. We will continue, of course, to provide quick and immediate response to our end-users when technical issues arise. And a goal of mine is to begin to develop a comprehensive technology curriculum from K to 12, and I think that the reconfiguration of our buildings will help us begin that, because we can start in one building and every year work up from there. And in addition, in your packets, I've given you a quick snapshot of some of the requests. We have a strict policy in the technology department. If you want support, you send us an email, and the reason we do that is in front of you, so that we can accurately log all of the issues that come in every day from teachers and aides and administrators around the district.
Thank you very much. That was great. Any questions or comments? Mrs. Ennis?
I'd just like to make a comment. I think, like, you must be a grant guru or something, because you really know how to go after the grants. And I've heard through the grapevine, and not even from people from this district, how you just know how to tackle and go after them, and you've come up with unbelievable amounts of money, I think. Can you tell us who are the nine districts you're working with for that really big...
Okay. Sure. Auburn, Grafton, Sutton, Northbridge, Webster, Southbridge, Oxford, Quabog, and Tantascwa, along with the Southern Wester County Educational Collaborative.
That's great. That's really great. Very impressive, I have to say. It sounds like you have... It sounds like you have absolutely control of the technology element that these schools need. And I think it's outstanding, I really do. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
I too want to commend you, Neil. I've seen your work in action firsthand sometimes, because I'm not the most astute, as Mr. Spitz knows. But I've come a long way in the last year since he was chair last time, so I don't look forward to harassing me this time around, thanks to you. All right. But I love grants, and I love what you're doing. I only have one concern, and I just want to make sure that we're still going the same way. So far, it looks like all the grants have been for us. But now that you're partnering with eight, nine, 10 other towns on two, three different grants, are we the administer of these grants, you are?
We are.
Okay. Are they individually paid to each individual school? Does it run through our system, through you, through the grant?
The way the technology grants with the DESE work is that, number one, you have to be a high-needs district to apply.
Okay.
You have to be, you know, that's just one qualifier right there. And you will not get a grant if you do not partner. That's just, that's just one of the rules. You have to partner with one or more districts or collaboratives.
But that leads me to my final question, I guess. Everything else is fine. I just monitor grants, because of what has happened to me and to the district in the past, where we've had grants and had to live with them afterward. Yours seem to be the right kind of grants, there are no strings attached to them. Do we have an administrative fee to any of these other school systems? Or is this just part of the grant that you can't recoup an extra 5% for ourselves, or?
No, it's not allowed. It's not part of what the grant funding. The benefit to us, though, is the product.
Is the grant money, what we're doing with it.
Not necessarily the grant money, but the product that we get at the end. Our high school students, as well as the students from Project Coffee, for this particular grant, will have access to 24 online courses that they wouldn't have, for free. And our teachers benefit as well. We get the professional development, they get the stipend for developing the courses and delivering them as well, so.
I understand that, and I think it's great. Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much again. In your package, we also had athletic handle changes, which we did not approve as part of the, it's a separate, that we do need approval on. So could we motion to approve these as written?
So moved.
Do we have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, could we vote on that, please? Mrs. DeWittzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also vote yes, that's all set as well. Thank you very much. And thank you all very much. This is really, every year it gets better. So I just want to thank you all for your efforts. It's really a pleasure to read through these, to see what you've accomplished, what you plan to accomplish. And I'll tell you, it's really quality work. So thank you very, very much. Next, we have, I'd like to get a report, if we could, from Mrs. Ennis on the principal search update for our subcommittees.
Sure. I'm glad to do that. We have our chair here this evening, Joanne Daly. The members of this search committee are Sue Grenier, Bonnie Gilligan, Mimi Mum, Kathleen Shomar, Donna Murphy, Mary Jane Burke, and myself. And I will comment on this group of women that have absolutely been very thoughtful, very concerned and caring about this search that we're in the midst of. We had our last interview today, and we are now in deliberations. I think that we all have really put our heart and soul into doing the very best job we can to give our superintendent some really strong candidates, we hope. And I have to, I have to make one comment from our interviews, without giving away any confidentiality, of course. Every one of our interviews all want to be here. They were impressed, they did their homework, they knew about the district, complimented our website, complimented the town. A lot of really great things came from them. So I just want the committee and the public to know that these are people that are really interested in the position. And hopefully, Mr. Superintendent, we will have something for you soon.
Do you have any definite dates as to when you'd like to make those presentations to him, or?
We should have names for him by Friday.
Cool, thank you very much.
And I think you're going to appoint on the, I think he's, I think Mr. Himmelberger's set to appoint on the 18th, maybe, 18th of June.
Very good, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Himmelberger, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Spitz. Just wanted to clarify for everybody listening that the last day of school is, in fact, Monday, June 14th, Flag Day. And that the Barton and Chafee Schools will dismiss at 12:30. And the middle school has their recognition day, and that will be a regular day. And also, the high school has a regular day as well. Just something that Neil said that reminded me to let the committee know, as well as folks watching, that the Southern Wester County superintendents have all understood the value of collaboration. And I really didn't have to do a whole lot of selling to the, to my colleagues as regarding this collaboration on this era tech grant. And so much so that all of the towns in the Southern Wester County area now have the same calendar for next year, with the same professional development days, so that we could collaborate there as well. So there is a lot of movement in that direction across regions throughout the state. And I think that we are certainly at the forefront of those types of collaborations which benefit the students. And so I'm looking forward to more of that. The last thing I wanted to say was, this town is very, very lucky to have the professionals that you see in front of us. The work certainly shows, you cannot imagine the number of early mornings, late afternoons, and evenings that this administrative team puts in, and Sundays and weekends, that no one knows about. And they don't ask for any recognition. And it has been an incredible year. Sometimes we get bogged down in negative things that are floated out there, or that we run into. And it's easy to get sidetracked and lose focus on what we do every day. And that is to provide our students, every single one of them, with as quality an education as we can. And so I wanted to thank, again, the entire administrative team. Mr. Nugent and Mr. Millen are sometimes get overlooked because they're minding the store when we do meet. But their contributions certainly can be validated by Mrs. Hackett and Mr. Wells. It's a team, it's truly a team effort. And I just want to say thank you very much for a terrific first year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Matthew?
Thank you very much. In your packets, I had two different memos. The first I'd like to talk about is the budget update before this is penned. As you can see, I did include the revised budget numbers as voted by the committee at its April meeting. We're getting close to the end of the year and have some funds left available as unencumbered. That number continues to shrink and will continue to shrink, despite everybody's best efforts to make sure that everything is encumbered. There will always be a trickle of bills that come in, or unexpected expenses that happen. So at the next school committee meeting, which will be two, three weeks from now, I'll provide another update, give you a further projection as to where we project to end the year. The one thing I would say as an overall is, if there are indeed any funds, and it's a big if, any funds available as we get closer to the end of the year, I would like the committee's permission, either now or at the meeting of the 28th, to expend it on educational materials, textbooks, and those sorts of things that, you know, will pay off and have long-term investment.
Any questions on that, on the committee? So you're all set?
I would move to support him on that. We've done that in the past, and I think it's only prudent that, because we don't want to turn any money back.
You're only a three-day shopping window, that's about all.
The way it's gone, we have a few days after the closing of the budget to encumber some funds. But I think it'd be prudent, while prices are such, to do it at that time with his discretion.
If the committee's pleasure is so, that's what we should do. So we have a motion on the table?
Second.
Okay, can we put that to a vote, please?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
I also vote yes, so there you go.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome very much.
I just want to thank him, too, that he's done a fine job in not restraining, but controlling our budget.
Certainly has, certainly has. Mrs., oh, I'm sorry.
The other thing I'd like to talk about is the middle school lunch serving line. I'm sure you all had a chance to read the memo, but in case not, the middle school serving line is very antiquated. It is still functioning, but is becoming more and more of a challenge to keep in that state. And as a result, if we enter the next school year without doing significant repairs or replacement, as suggested here, there may come the time where it goes down for a day or two. And, you know, we have to make alternative plans for serving lunch at the middle school. The last project that Mrs. Scolaro would like to tackle is this serving line. And we do have some rough estimates in the neighborhood of around $30,000. I think it's a wise adjustment, the lunch program does have sufficient funds to cover that and leave it in at least, at a minimum, the same position that it started this year with. So I'd ask the committee's permission to go ahead and take a look at this.
Mrs. Ennis?
Would this be a project for the summer?
Yes, ideally.
If we were to support this?
And if the committee does vote to support this this evening, we can get in slightly earlier than the other schools that might be looking at this, so that we can get, it's about a six-week lead time. But we can make sure that ours is done and ready to go, really by the end of July at this point, beginning of, first week of August, rather than making it close. Are we going to get there? Okay, a couple days, we'll have to serve cold lunch, or whatever the case may be.
Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion to approve?
I would move to support this. It seems to be that the account has the appropriate funds and will leave us an appropriate balance, as usual, to start the next year with, so.
Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Okay, very good. Can we put this to a vote, please? Mrs. DeWittzick?
Yes.
Mrs. Coonan?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Peterson? I also vote yes.
Thank you very much.
There you go. Mrs. DeWittzick?
I just have two quick things. Ms. James had mentioned about the photos of students in her handbook, which is great. And we have talked about that in the past. I didn't look through it and see, although, is that something, through the chair, Ms. Himmelberger, is that attached now to all the handbooks for all the schools, so that we don't get into that problem?
That's one of our topics for tomorrow's ad council.
Okay.
To make sure that, that if we need to be covered, that we are.
That photo, I think we've talked about that several times. That'd be great, thank you. And the only other thing I have is to let people know that these are geometry projects in front of us. And they're really festive, and they're great. And they kind of cross with the artwork, so people think it's art, but it was actually a geometry project. So I have nothing else, thank you.
Very cool, thank you. Mrs. Coonan?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay, Mrs. Ennis?
I have one thing. As I continue on my research with the bullying, I've kind of gone a little bit further and taken another step, I guess. And I had spoken with Mr. Spitz in regard to putting together an anti-bullying task force. I went online and I researched a lot of districts within our area, stayed within Massachusetts. And I did come up with a bullying peer aggression policy from the Milton Public Schools. It's probably the best I've read yet. And I've been reading, reading them as I, as I researched them. So I'm looking for, I guess, for Mr. Spitz to, if you want to make any further comment, of course, in regard to putting together a subcommittee that would work on continuing our efforts against our anti-bullying stance that we want to take within our community.
Well, I think some of the things that we've put together through the handbooks have done a foundation for that already. But again, I think, to your point, and I agreed with you on, that it's really, we couldn't possibly do too much with this, this whole program that you're talking about right now. And I think that it would be wise for the committee to always be a step ahead of this. I know there are state standards that we have to meet, which I think we've done through the handbooks, and I think we've accomplished that. But I think your ideas really will take us to that next level with this program. And I certainly would support putting together a group with parents, and maybe someone from the police department, anybody at all from the public services in town that could help us with this whole program. And I think you have a listing of the people you'd like to see included in there. I certainly would have no problem saying that, you know, we should go forward with something to even bring that to the next step.
And if I might?
Certainly.
I did, as I'm going through my research, I did reference in many of these newer policies that some of these schools are putting together. There is a Mass General Law that's very recent. It's Chapter 71, Subsection 37, the letter O, that I think that we need to reference within our handbooks. It is the procedure portion, and we don't have it included in our policy. But it is a very new, a new chapter, actually, it's a new subsection to the chapter. So as I had said, as I had said before to you, this is something that with parents, I would like to actually have this committee invite people in, because I think this is one of those times where the open door is fine, but I think it's nice to receive an invitation from the committee that we're putting together this group, and we'd like your input. So I'm hoping that we can, we can move further on this, because there's a lot more to policy than what we have actually right now, so.
Any questions or comments on that? So is this something the committee would like to go forward with? Mrs. Coonan?
I think it's in our best interest.
Okay, so would we like to motion to establish a committee, to, a subcommittee, to actually do this bullying policy as you've suggested? Would like to motion that?
I'd make a motion, yes, to put together a subcommittee to the school committee and give our recommendations, of course, to the committee and to our superintendent. This would be a bullying and peer aggression policy. It's a little bit different.
So it's different than what Mrs. DeWittzick presently had done?
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah.
I think it takes it to the next step.
It does, it takes it up a, it brings it up a notch, is the best way to put it.
Okay, so do we have a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right, so let's put it to a vote, to establish a subcommittee? Certainly.
The next step, I know you've all read it, but I haven't read what you were looking at. Is it, is it take the policy that the MASCE and the school departments are all taking and putting penalties with it? I'm not sure, I'm a little at a disadvantage, because I haven't seen it, so I just was kind of...
I just, I know I printed it up late, and that's why I don't, I put, I will put a copy of this in everyone's mailbox. But what it does is, this has the definition of bullying, definition of cyberbullying. It sets a scope up. It gives you all the procedures, which, again, are for this new Chapter 71, Subsection 37O, that we don't have any reference to. It's a prevention and intervention plan. It sets up programs that the school committee brings forth to the schools. It addresses staff development. Parent and guardian education is also included with it. It has a reporting standard that they use, a victim interview, the accused interview. It's just, and I can go on and on, it has a discipline rubric within it. It's, it's policy, but like I said, it is a notch up. It has a draft here for a report form, the rubric.
Is this, Mrs. Ennis, is it in place of the one that the association is recommending?
No.
Or is it in addition to? Because it sounds like it'd be conflicting, that's the only problem, that I think when you have a couple of policies that are very defined. Has anybody had both?
I don't think our policy has a reporting aspect to it.
It doesn't.
Our policy does not have a disciplinary rubric. Like I said, this is, would probably be in addition to. That, again, would be something for the committee, the subcommittee, to review.
Mr. Peterson?
Before we get too far off the track, I want to see that myself. But I believe your motion was to set up a study committee at this point in time. And you're not recommending anything, per se, presently.
Oh, no, I'm only using this as something, this is one of the better ones that I have researched.
I have no problem continuing to study it, but I would not support anything presently until I have read that myself.
Oh, no, no.
No, oh, no.
I certainly agree, that you should read everything that we...
I'm not putting to, putting forth to accept this policy at all, no.
The study committee, it's my understanding that you've moved forward tonight in an additional committee.
Right.
Right.
Mr. Himmelberger?
It sounds like what this will do is certainly make a lot of folks' jobs easier, because part of that new law is that we need to create a K-12 curriculum on bullying, which we need to have in place by September. And we also need to deliver all of those issues as part of our prevention policy and bullying policy and reporting policy to DESE by December 31st. 31st.
That's right.
So a lot of what you have raised here, Mrs. Ennis, is exactly what has to be grabbed and corralled into something meaningful, so that we can do our share of what we need to do for that, for that law.
Could that subcommittee be part of that, that whole process? Is this?
I think it certainly could.
Extend it more than just that one piece of paper. Extend through that.
Yep. It certainly could, Mrs. Dewitzick. It certainly could.
That was my understanding, that's...
Yeah, it is. Right. It is. So basically, what we're voting on tonight is just that the establishment of a committee to study the additional, anything additionally that we could do to add to the present policy to, to make sure that we're following every state mandate. We've also got disciplined things in place. And they will bring recommendations to, to the committee at some point for us to vote on at that time, once we've all been given all the information that we need in order to make those decisions. But this was really just to establish that committee. It's pretty much all it is.
I don't know what requirements or who you're going to put on the committee, but again, in conjunction with the administrative staff or however you're going to do this, so that it falls on the proper timelines also.
Well, you had a, an idea. I have your email here somewhere that, where you made, where you made your idea. Teachers, district staff, that you would like to see four parents, one from each building, two administrators, three students, one, two middle, one high school, three teachers, one representing elementary, one middle, one high, and you also wanted to see one police officer as well.
If possible.
If possible. So that is what we'd like to see as, as part of this committee as well.
I have no problem if you think you can get all those people. I think you're going to have troubles if you get one parent from each one. I think you're going to be doing well.
I agree. That's the wish list, Eric.
I have no problem.
That's the wish list, so.
That's right. It's a wish list.
I'd love to see that happen, come to fruition, but I, I don't know if we will see that or not. So we do have a motion. We do have a second to that motion. Can we put that to a vote, please?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Ennis? Mr. Peterson?
Yes, under those terms.
Yeah, and I also will vote yes. Okay, very good. Mrs. Ennis, are you all set?
That was it for me. Thank you.
Okay, very good. I have nothing tonight. Future meeting dates, which have already been established, is June 28th. We're going to open the floor for questions. I'm sorry, what did I do? Mr. Peterson, I apologize. I really apologize.
That's all you had, Mrs. Peterson, listen before. She might as well come and sit here anyway, instead of me, but...
Go right ahead. I apologize. I really do.
Anyway.
I was looking at this side of the table, and I just ignored you.
I haven't jumped to the administrative staff. Yeah, you can't afford me. I, I want to commend Mr. Wells and his staff and the, the students as well, graduate. I, I've forgotten what, we've given accolades to what we have, and there's so many things going on at this time of the year. I forget what night and at what, but graduation was phenomenal. I, I think the, the graduation, the senior banquet was excellent, again, also. I'd like to commend the retirees. Unfortunately, I'm right looking at dates, Mr. Himmelberger, and you are, you can remember those dates. Don't tell me otherwise, right?
Wow.
I can, and it's funny, because my kids used to play with Mrs. Brunel's kids in my backyard when we first moved to town, so it's, I had forgotten she'd been here that long. But to all of those that are retiring, they have really dedicated themselves to us and the children of this community, and I want to wish them well personally, myself publicly, all right? Mrs. Scolaro, we attended her retirement party, was excellent. But I have a question with her retiring now, and she and I talked about it. We're not sure where we're going, but we have a wellness committee, Mr. Himmelberger, that is established and ongoing and functioning, which she happens to chair. I would like you to write that down and figure out where we're going and what we're going to do to continue, because we have an annual report that has to be given to the state as well, all right? So I don't know who's handling what or where we're going with it. Mr. Chair, put it on your...
I have that on my list of things that we're going to find out.
I believe that's all I have tonight. There's a lot of things coming up in the next couple of days, but it's a busy time of the year, but this is what we really sit here for in the fruition that we see of our students and the community. It's great, so thank you.
Do you want an extra five minutes, because I slighted you?
No, no, it's all right. That's it tonight.
Certainly, Mrs. Dewitzick.
Just, Mr. Peterson made a motion, mentioned the subcommittee. Could you disband the full-day kindergarten subcommittee, because I don't believe we are needed anymore?
That's an excellent, that's an excellent suggestion.
You retract it, right?
Could we, could we have a motion to do that?
So moved.
Could we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote on it.
Yes.
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 Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Mrs. Dewitzick, thank you for your service on that committee. And it's now disbanded. And we did have one other. We had the executive minutes that were not included when we voted on our minutes for the 24th of May. Everyone has a copy in their package. We could just get those approved if the committee chooses to?
We're settled at that, right? We can approve those now?
Yes.
I believe in reading it. I think we're done, right?
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Abstain.
Okay.
Yes.
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 And I also vote yes, so those are also approved.
I would, I would request, though, that Mr. Chair, Mrs. Conan was not secretary at the time. No slight to you, Laura, but I believe the reporting secretary at the time when these minutes were done should sign me.
Okay. Can we change those on both, because it's presently on the 24th as well? The minutes for the 24th, I was still the...
Yeah, it's fine.
So we can take care of those two?
Thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Now, do I, do we get everybody? And everybody's had their comments. All right. Don't want to slight anyone else here. Okay, we're going to open up the floor for comments or questions. Come right forward. And if you could please just identify yourself by name, and, just to let you know how this works, you pretty much can talk about any school-related issue that you'd like to. We will not comment on it tonight, but we will take anything you say under advisement, and we appreciate you being patient and waiting to get to this point. So first, identify who you are and what you'd like to discuss.
Okay, well, thank you. I'm Alex White. I'm a sophomore here at Oxford High, and this is my friend Dan Klein. He's a junior. And I'd just like to discuss the termination of the industrial arts program, because I see that as a big mistake, because, like, the woodshop and architecture give a different way for kids to express themselves, like, they can't in art or band or theater or whatever. And I, it's just, I don't, I don't even know. Like, we had a petition going around. Hold on. Oh, yeah. It helps, it helps students, like, learn skills that, like, how to use tools and how to woodwork that they might need, like, out of high school and out of college, because a lot of, a lot of kids don't realize that they need those skills now, but then they take the class and realize that when they grow up, they're going to need them to, like, fix something or build something. And I just think we really need to keep it in the budget to have these classes. And, and a lot of students can't take these classes, because the, they're smart students, and the classes, like, woodshop are at the same time as their other classes. Like, right now, pre-calculus is periods five, one, and seven, and woodshop, two of the woodshops are one and seven, so they can't take it because it doesn't fit into their schedule. And I talked to Mr. Wells previously about this issue for, it was really briefly, but he said the numbers weren't there this year to keep it, but I think that is because it just doesn't fit into kids' schedules. Like, a lot of people try to sign up for it, and they just can't take it.
Okay.
Yeah, we've talked to a lot of kids that are interested in it. We've talked to Mr. D. He's found 40-plus kids that are interested in taking woodshop, architecture, those two classes. I've taken it three times, three different times through my high school. It's been fun every time, learned something new. Each year, we do something a little bit harder, get used to it, you know?
Very good. And again, I appreciate you taking your time and coming in here to speak to the committee on this issue. We will certainly take what you've said under advisement, and again, thank you very much for taking the time tonight and coming in and letting us know how you feel about it. We really do appreciate it.
Thank you, and I, I realize Mr. DeWallace's teaching styles are really unorthodox, but like...
We're not here to discuss that.
Why do you want to go that far?
In a strange way, it really helps us learn. Like, one of, one of his weird sayings is poop flows downhill, and it's, it's saying that if you start out with something, it's going to end up, no, if you start out with crap, it's going to end up as crap. Like, it just stays as crap.
That's, that's a pretty good motto to live by, I think.
Yeah, so he, like, he actually does teach some strange life lessons that actually do help.
Well, that's great. And it's great.
If you do end up terminating it, we just wanted a better reason other than abide an explanation of there's not enough people.
Yep, and we certainly can, can do that for you. So tonight, you've given your opinion to the committee, and I really do appreciate it, as we said, and certainly will take what you've said under advisement.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thanks for coming in. Thank you.
Thanks.
And if there are no more questions or comments, I'll close the floor. We do have a request tonight for an executive session, and that would be to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigation position, also to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations. Can I just, like, say the chapter thing?
Yeah, just say Chapter 3.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Dewitzick. Chapter 3. So we will be coming out just to close, so thank you very much, everybody, and again, thank you all for work on that.
Need a motion, Bill?
Oh, God, of course you can.
Yeah, no kidding.
Well, then, you definitely should.
So moved. So moved.
We have to just, we have to just go into it.
Give to both.
Second.
Oh, no, you have to call it.
We vote?
You have to call it.
You have to roll call it.
Mrs. Dewitzick?
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Conan? Mrs. Ennis?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?